All right, welcome everybody. April 27th work session of the Penfield Planning Board. Allison, would you mind reading the roll please?
Yes. Mr. Heskey?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Knauer?
Here.
Tiedings?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Wyser?
Here.
All right, we got minutes sent to us this afternoon.
This morning.
Uh, this morning? Okay, well, as far as I'm concerned, it was this afternoon. But, uh, 11 pages, hopefully everyone got a chance to read them. If you didn't, please speak up and otherwise, um...
I'll make the motion approve.
If you're comfortable with us approving them, let's go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the motion approve.
One second.
Heskey?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi. And just for the record, I watched the video.
All right.
Of this amazing board. Riving video. I can prove two out of three. That's gotta be a record. So, yeah, and I recommend it.
It's a busy night.
All right.
Burton?
Hi.
Knauer?
Hi.
Tiedings?
Hi.
Okay. Zach?
Yep, first table that, first table application, baby landing. I just have one correction from our last meeting. Uh, the applicant was not able to meet with the town board yesterday as I had thought they would. There was, uh, they had to fly in from out of town and they weren't able to. So, they will be there at the May work session meeting to present the, or to discuss the information I talked about last meeting about doing, uh, kind of like more improvements in the LaSalle's Landing District, which is obviously controlled by the town board. So, once we have more updates following that meeting, I'll come back with more to this board. Other than that, no new updates.
All right. Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue table the application.
You got a second? Burton?
Okay, Heskey?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Knauer?
Hi.
Tiedings?
Hi.
Okay.
All right. Second table, application, Penfield Storage on Penfield Road. Uh, applicant provided, submitted, uh, some revised plans and architectural drawings earlier this week. We provided that to the board, uh, and the latest update for your computers there. Now, we have the updated draw, uh, site plans on the projector here. First thing we can note out is that they did provide some floor plan details specifically for what's proposed on the additions in the back. There we go, other way. Board asked for some information about that, mainly with the orientation about, uh, the doors facing the apartment. As you can see, they're 10 by 10 units, which only require a man door and no rolling doors. So, the anticipated, um, noise from that, I guess, was one of the concerns, um, is minimal. Any concerns from the board about the layout that you see here?
No.
No? Okay. It was a minor point, but I just wanted to call it out because we do have that information. Landscaping, if you go to the lighting and landscaping plan. Per the comments of the town's last landscape consultant, the applicant has provided an updated landscape plan, uh, to replace a lot of the existing vegetation that was mainly scrubbed, brush, or a dying plant, and has shown a significant improvement along that boundary from the front to the back. This is the front half of the section. If you pan over on the plan, it continues all the way down. Again, this is the side that borders the apartments. So, you have a mix of juniper trees and arper varieties along this mix here. I, I can send it to the, uh, landscape consultant once more, as we would anyways during the pre-miler review, to get his blessing. It's required that he would have to sign off on this plan anyways. Board have any concerns about the landscaping proposed?
No. Anybody?
No. Okay. Uh, lighting, they are still showing, and let's see if we can go to one of the, the elevation drawing, Doug. Not that one. Oh, yeah, we can use that one. That works. After the board's discussion last meeting, there was back and forth between the type of lighting application for the entrance side, which obviously get a little more security here. They are showing an LED, uh, building mounted light, cut off, dark sky compliant, but it'll better illuminate, um, the entrance drive where, again, they want a little more visibility there for when customers are coming in to use the storage units. It's a 24-hour operation. On the other side of the building, they did apply the gooseneck lights. Uh, gotta go to a different page. Scroll down. There you go. So, we have the goosenecks on the side that does not have, uh, any of the overhead doors for those storage units. So, that was applied over there, just have a more residential look to it.
That's lawn and nothing really over there, correct?
No, not much. Just your, uh, I believe it's Charlie Brown's restaurant to the, to that side.
Right. Do we need that much light over there? Why? Or, I mean, were they just put there for decorative?
Believe it could've, they would've been added as a decorative touch. The applicant is in the audience if you'd like to ask the question.
In a second, 'cause you wanna speak to us, right?
Very, very quickly.
Okay. So, it's a go-to?
Um, so, those are the big updates that I had. Architecturally, they did show on these plans as well, we have spandrel glass showing as the board requested. And to that comment, I did speak with the applicant earlier today. They have a couple follow-up comments to this submission. And if the board would like to invite them up to the audi, to the table to have a brief update?
Come on up.
We can usually do that.
All right, just to touch on your lighting, quick if I could?
Sure.
Um, so, the lighting on that side was, one, because we have two exit doors, so we, my code have to light those up. Those are a lot lower wattage LED fixture, those goosenecks. And it was just kind of to provide some architectural light. If the board felt it was too much, we could probably eliminate 50% of them and have them just kind of over the doors if that was a problem. Really just architectural.
And why not go with the RLM shades, the goosenecks, uh, on the opposite side?
On the other side, again, the, uh, the LED configuration we can get from those doesn't drive the light out. We did look at, I think, might've been Jack, possibly, Jim, I'm sorry, that had a comment about, uh, maybe adding some light bollards or something. We did study that. We had some problems with, one, conflicts with landscaping, because there's only about five feet over there to try to fit something in, um, as far as underground utility electric and so on. And we were also facing, uh, concerns of more light spillage onto the residential property.
Doug, can you pull that up?
So, what we did, and there's a, a very small footnote underneath our lighting table, that we're proposing that all the fixtures that face the residential side there, uh, which would be along that, that line there, will have the lighting reduction control device that we discussed briefly at the last meeting. I've met with some lighting consultants about that, so those can dim from anywhere, you know, I think it's 30 to 100%. So, we were kind of thinking somewhere between 30 and 50% during off hours, or, or late hours, I guess I should say.
So, I think from the standpoint of the goosenecks on the, on the other side of the building, I prefer to continue to see those as an architectural element. And you can either lamp them down or control them down if, you know, if too much light spillage is, is an issue.
Well, we can't get, if we put those on the building, we can't get the lighting of the driveway that we feel is appropriate for...
I'm talking about the other side.
Oh, the other side?
Currently showing?
Yes.
Sorry. You're talking on the Charlie Brown side?
Charlie Brown, I'm sorry, yes. I apologize.
So, keep them the way they're proposed, is what you're suggesting?
I, I would prefer to see...
We can go to a lower lumen fixture, per fixture. Um, I'm not sure. I think those might be 1200s. We can, I think they make an 800. Uh, we could lumen those down if...
You like that, AJ?
Yeah. So, that's a 600. So, that's actually pretty low already. Um, they might make a 400 lumen that we could look at, or, I mean, 600's pretty low anyway, so...
600 is about, uh, 40 watts of incandescent light.
Yeah. We were trying to just sort of bathe the facade a little bit, just to give a little presence.
Maybe 50 watts. Okay. I... You know, I guess we can go with this. I, I, there are definitely more decorative fixtures that are wall mount that will throw light the 20 feet that you want to throw.
There are, one of the, when we were talking with the lighting consultant, one of the, I guess, issues is we were, I guess, we were under the impression that we kind of really were trying to do the lighting reduction factor device. And that's a really new thing, and to get it the way that the owner wants it, so that it's, it's on motion sensors, so that if someone does come in at night, they can still have brighter light at their door for the 20 minutes, 30 minutes that they're there. That's fairly limited in the fixture you can get it in right now, because it's brand, it's really a brand-new technology. And it's really, from what I saw, because I did talk to them, I actually did my office for like two hours yesterday, it's pretty much all wall pack right now. Or, you know, like, you know, parking lot light pole-type fixtures. So, we could, we could consider looking at a different fixture. It just might mean we might not be able to do the lighting reduction possibly.
Okay. Okay. When do you want to build this?
As soon as we get approval, I'm sure the owner's gonna be beaten on me to get him his final guaranteed price. I know that. So, um, I know he was already talking to demolition contractors about the existing buildings and so on, so... I, I don't have an answer for you, I guess, on that, because Kevin's not, he was supposed to be here, but he's not here, so...
He's in a hurry.
What's the, you wanted to talk to us about something else?
Yeah, so the only other thing, um, we submitted, obviously, with the spandrel glass, because that's what the board requested. The applicant actually happened to be in Victor yesterday, uh, and went by the large Walmart Kohl's complex there, um, on 96, and called me immediately because the Kohl's building, which I think was built like roughly two years ago, has basically the, the sort of simulated drive-it windows that we were originally discussing. So, he just asked that I take some really good pictures and present them to you. I mean, we honestly feel that there are advantages to the, the drive-it windows in this scenario. One being thermal, two is cost, um, three is just if something were to break on the window, it's diff, more difficult to repair, yada, yada, yada. I mean, I know it's, it's not major concerns probably to the board. We felt that the diminishing angle that you have at both these, these elevations, you're not gonna get a great view of the glass, per se. So, I just took pictures of these for the board's just final consideration, um, because the applicant asked me to. He is prepared, if he has to do this, to do this. I mean, he wants this to move forward, so if that's what he has to do, he said he will do it. But he just wanted me to bring these tonight just for consideration and final discussion, I guess. So, I have a number of copies of the pictures, if you guys would like to look at them.
Pass them around, that'd be great.
Maybe double up and share it here.
I think it's important to note that that particular building sits...
It does.
Very far off the road. There's not way more than that.
Oh, there's more coming.
Yeah, I got more, guys, sorry. They're more important than us.
This is similar to what Christmas Tree Shops does on their, on their building sites.
So, there's a slight reveal on that. It was like a, they had like a one inch, we were showing a two-inch reveal before. So, you do get a little depth, but...
What's the proposed color that you would have on this?
For the, if we did this? So, we are kind of revised rendering here that we show has the lighter gray, the material that we physically brought to you guys last time. So, we would propose some sort of, you know, darker-than-light gray material, so that it gave some, some depth and contrast. But I think we'd be open to, honestly, if you guys had a preference, we'd be open to whatever. I mean, I would see trimming it in, uh, in gray trim around the perimeter of it, because that's what we're showing for all our corner trims and everything on the, uh, hardy board material. So, I would see the perimeter of it being like a dark gray trim, and then we could do white, you know, mullions, just like these show, and a darker back or lighter back. I mean, if you guys had a preference, I don't think, we're talking about the windows. I don't think Mr. Farrell would have any problem if you had a suggestion.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to board's comments.
Yeah, I, I don't agree. I, I, I think this building sits way too close to the road. I think the, the material itself, um, is, uh, probably going to get a, a good deal of environmental dust and dirt embedded in the texture over time. I think it looks, you know, a little cheap, and in an otherwise very nice-looking utilitarian structure. I, I, I would still advocate for this favorite place.
Okay. Any other comments?
I agree.
You agree with Joe?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. So, this is Hardy board, it's called?
No, it's a, it's a drive-it product.
Okay. But it looks like it's more matte versus glass that would...
It is. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, a coarser...
Yeah. Similar to the, the building sample materials they presented at the public hearing that we handed out, the dais up there?
So, to play devil's advocate with you, the, the building is long and narrow, and on the west side, Charlie Brown's side, there's gonna be shrubs and, uh, you know, as you approach it...
They're pretty high up.
They'll be high up, but...
Doug has it on the screen.
Will you see it, um, how visible will they be, and actually on both sides?
Yeah, I think they're gonna be less visible on the east side. That, that side of the building will be more shielded.
Yeah, we're considering...
So, if you're looking, if you're, you're thinking about, um, you know, making a compromise, I guess, um, that, that kind of detail on the east side wouldn't bother me as much. But on, on the west side, um, that's gonna be very visible, the glass is high up, it's prominent.
The front of the building, where is it in relation to front of that building so far? Is it much further forward?
Actually, they provided us with a drawing...
I know.
To show us a comparison of where they were.
Yeah, I know.
It would be in those, there's a, the one Jim's referencing was in that folder, Doug?
Who's that?
The one previous, I'm sorry. Existing and proposed. But those are elevations. I'm not sure if there are the front-to-front comparison besides looking at the site plan?
Yeah, and the demolition, uh, or the site plan, or the demolition plan had a little relation there too, I think, that showed it.
Submitted, oh, you had it there in the submitted plans.
Pressure's on, Doug.
Uh...
Don't click the wrong thing.
Existing conditions and site plan. So, there you'll see the two buildings now. And then, call the, call the site plan.
So, that's who exists in the building. I don't know if you see that, because it looks similar. It looks this...
Yeah. So, the, the main face of the proposed building is approximately the same as the main face of the house?
Of the existing building.
The house has kind of that little bump out.
Turns from setback off the right-of-way.
Right. So, technically, we're further back from the setback, because the house has the little bump-out entrance foyer. So, but we're, we're very similar, if not exactly the same, to the main face of the house.
Okay, can you bring back, yeah, there you go. So, you're... I think you have a good point. That whole face of the building will be pretty visible to the, to the road. You'll see a pretty large gray mass.
Well, you'll see those, those windows fairly prominently. The, uh, the landscaping material will shield more of the, the large opaque wall.
Yeah. What, what are your thoughts on this?
I, I think the, the glass-like material would look nicer, even on it.
Okay. Terry?
I don't have a problem with...
With, with what? With either one?
With the, this, whatever you call this fake...
The ethus one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, I think we had a consensus, actually, on the glass, right? Glass, glass, glass. Uh, Terry's ambivalent. I mean, he might either one. I like his little word, ambivalent.
No, 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 not, not the table, but the building.
Oh.
So, I heard more discussion about one side versus the other.
It's still visible from the other side.
I would say consistent would be better than, you know, one on one side than another on the other side.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, sure.
Consensus?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Glass.
So, as proposed on these elevations that were submitted...
Yeah.
Uh, this week, for this meeting.
Yeah.
Those are the elevations that the board's going with. Okay?
Yeah. What else on this?
Going through the list of things...
Did they submit, uh, an auto turn video?
Yes. Thank you. That is, uh, on the site plan. There's a turning temple on that. Doug, come to the other end, please. We did get them the information for Penfield Fire Department, uh, largest fire truck apparatus that would have to navigate the site. I don't remember the numbers offhand. It was large. Larger than what the applicant stated in the presentation about the 28-foot box truck. I believe this was, oh, there it is. 36 feet. So, yeah, larger vehicle.
No, it's 36 feet.
Oh, wrong, 36, sorry.
There's a chart just up to the right that lists the line.
Thank you.
My concern was, uh, closer to the...
Up front?
Yeah.
Turning for a very long, yeah, there you go. 46-foot long fire truck.
Scroll down, Zach, if you don't mind.
I would love to. So, yeah, with the two properties, it's cool. Yeah, I used to, I used to do that. I used to man the computer, I know you. I know the struggles.
We were many years ago.
See, he's, he's not going that officially, so I figured it was you.
True. That's true. That's true, I was. Taking my time for you.
Okay, so...
So, to address your concern...
So, I'm looking at two sets of dotted or dashed lines. Is one the front end of the truck and the other the rear end of the truck?
Actually, the, the software, we have, takes the wheels.
Yes, the darker line is the wheel itself, the lighter line is the out, outer edge of the bumper.
Like the bumper, right.
So, when we do this, oftentimes, not here, but oftentimes, the bumper will overhang grass and so on.
So, that would...
So, it's tight.
Just barely make it.
You know, keep in mind one thing. We always ask them to model using the town's ladder truck. It's the biggest truck.
Mm-hmm.
In all...
Right. And how often is that gonna be out there?
Well, it would never, in all likelihood, it would never go to this site, where we've got a bunch of low-rise buildings.
Right.
You know, they, they would take a quint, um, which is, you know, two-thirds that size and, you know, connect to hydrant broke.
So, if they had to do this, they could make it, they could make it work.
This would be a serious event, if that vehicle had to go in there.
Okay.
They'd never take it. They'd never jeopardize that ladder truck in this tight, these tight quarters.
All right. You guys comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is...
Yes.
Okay. Next?
Okay. Those are all the issues I had. Thank you for calling out the turning temple. I know, I forgot to write something down earlier. Support, have any other questions, concerns? We'll go to architecture, landscaping. We will follow up, as always, with the landscape consultant to confirm it. Sorry.
Interior lighting?
Thank you. Would you like to ask the questions?
Uh...
Can I queue it up?
Yeah, you know, that's, I'm, I'm basically satisfied with, with that. I understand the, the marketing rationale and, you know, I've gotten past my initial hesitation.
Regarding interior lighting?
I don't know about anybody else, but...
I think the applicant, um, I don't want to speak to the board, but the applicant did discuss, they don't plan to make it, you know, as bright as the sun in there during the nighttime hours, but they would like to illuminate it to a degree to show that it is self-storage, and that's what that building is being used for.
Well, and I imagine they probably have some surveillance cameras, and you have to have enough illumination to be able to pick up activities.
Right.
And it's a pretty, you know, once they get back in there, it's a fairly remote part of the town.
For being in a very busy part in the town? Sort of a juxtaposition, I think, that would be the right term. Maybe not the right term.
You're throwing some big words around today.
Walked by front of the door. So, yeah, woo.
Is it rural?
It's running for its life since November 23rd.
Tops is down there, so you never know.
Okay.
So, I'm not hearing anything else.
No, the only, we have a, um... What's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, we have an approval resolution template in our drop.
Yes.
So, uh, are you guys comfortable with, uh, getting this off the table this week?
Yeah, as I was, I was saying before we got into the last lighting comment, one of the conditions would be that, it's already built into the resolution template, that, um, the landscape consultant would review this final update to the plan and, uh, give it his blessing.
I'd like to reserve the right to review the lighting plan again, too, just as a final thing.
Yes.
I think that there's a potential for some other options, but...
Yeah, it's, uh, you and the town engineer always have that option to review in the pre-miler phase as well.
Okay.
This is your...
Not hearing anything. There's part two EAF.
Yeah, somebody else, you know...
I'll make a motion first.
To approve? Okay?
Part two EAF? That's the first part.
I'll make a motion to...
Thank you.
You have a second?
One second.
Burton Bastian?
Heskey?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Knauer?
Hi.
Tiedings?
Hi.
All right. Next.
This would be to act on the approval resolution with conditions?
I, I move that we accept the application with conditions stated.
Okay. Second. Burton Bastian again.
Heskey?
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian? Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes it. We'll be in touch.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
All right. With that, known as 28th, I took care of the all table items. We have a couple seconds. The next meeting, we have a public hearing. There will be four applications at the public hearing, really ramping up this spring. We have a mic, what's being called a micro tower on Panorama Trail South in the right-of-way by Panorama Plaza. So, as you're going down Panorama, Doug's, oh, are you going there?
Yep.
Doug's going there, just for a reference. It's a 34-foot pole on a wooden utility pole with basically a canister on the top of the antenna, so no explosives.
That's a micro tower, 34 feet?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's the standard height of the existing utility poles that are out there. It's...
It's in the rocks.
It's in the rocks.
It'll be right here, sort of in line with the...
This is coming to both the zoning board and the planning board for site plan and Verizon. Dixon Eby is acting on behalf of Verizon. The zoning board will be seeing it for fall zone variance. The Monroe County DOT has already issued a permit to work within the right-of-way as well, so just wanted to give the board a little background on that one.
This is the latest round, latest thing, of these micro towers.
Exciting.
Indeed. Second application will be Bay Vista-Tacarea on Bay Road. They're looking to do a parking expansion behind the building and formalize a one-way-in, one-way-out around the building to go back out to Bay Road. So, they'd be chopping off the little bump out of the building there to allow for a driveway to re-enter that part of the parking lot, and then go back out to Bay Road. Kid Castle Way is a private drive, and they do not have access there. They could not come to an agreement with...
Baywind.
Baywind, thank you. Okay? The former Classy Chassis Car Wash site for the proposed office building, they're coming back for the very final application, 4,600-square-foot building with two uses, two tenants. And lastly, Aldis on Pennfield Road submitting an application to do an addition onto the front of the building, which will reduce some, it will have a net reduced, reduction in parking, however, they're restructuring the parking lot to regain some of those spaces. It's a, approximately a 3,000-square-foot addition, but going to add like one row, one more row of aisle space in the store, it's what all their stores are turning over to. So, they'll be before both the zoning board and planning boards for that application.
Who's this?
All these.
All these.
So, they basically lose the parking spots that are along the building?
Correct.
And the front entryway?
Front entryway, everything moves up, shifts over to the...
Yeah, it's basically rectangle. And do some restructuring.
Restriping, re-landscaping. Really isn't much change in lock coverage, it's more of the building face moves up and they redo the entrance. Sorry, my head's in the way. Okay? You will have those application materials end of next week in your drop, in order to review before the public hearing.
Nice.
Good.
All right.
Thanks.
Anything else?
That concludes our business.
Mislaidings?
All set.
That's all, mislaidings. All right.
What have we done?
We did great. We will adjourn. Have a great weekend, and just, anybody on TV wants to go see the Prism Council at 7:30 at Pennfield High, it'll be great.
I'll see you there.